We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the high United States of America, the people of which we serve, a nation under our universal and original justice.
Welcome everyone to the Lower Gwinnett Township Public Meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, August 22, 2023. Board of Supervisors did meet prior to this session to discuss matters of real estate and personnel. Before we jump into the meeting, I wanted to give a couple of updates or reminders. Lower Gwinnett Fall Fest is going to be on Saturday, September 23 from noon to 5:00 PM on Houston Road. And an open house of the McCormick House located on Worcester Road near the Ingersoll Ball Field will be happening August 23, which is Wednesday, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's a community open house, and we're looking for the community to provide input on how to memorialize the history of that school. With that, I'm going to transition to some sad but happy news. We are here to honor Officer Beth Sanborn for her long, well, to wish her a long and enjoyable retirement, but to honor her 26 years of service to Lower Gwinnett Township. I'm going to first turn it over to Senator Collette, who wants to say a few things about Officer Beth. You want to, yep.
Hello? Thank you, Chief. So, good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here with all of you. I'm Senator Maria Collette. I'm your neighbor right here in Lower Gwinnett Township, and I'm really glad to be here tonight to recognize and celebrate Dr. Beth Sanborn, who I have been honored to get to know on both a professional and personal level. From Dr. Sanborn's generous food pantry donation during my first open house in 2019, to meeting about the important role of SROs in Pennsylvania schools, and even seeing her in front of my son's elementary school during drop-off just two days after the Uvalde tragedy, I broke the rules in Carline that day to get out to give you a hug, but also to thank you for being there because it really meant the world to me that being so far away during that tragedy up in Harrisburg, just knowing that my son was in your hands, meant the world to me. So, thank you. I really have seen firsthand the dedication, compassion, and expertise that Dr. Sanborn brings to everything she does. And Officer Beth, as she's fondly known in our house and in our community, really truly does love our kids. And the best evidence I have of that is that my son didn't even hesitate when I asked him if he'd like to join me here this evening to honor Beth. And those of you who know, 11-year-old boys, know that they don't typically volunteer to come to township meetings, but I'm happy that he's here with me this evening. So, with your work in the Lower Gwinnett PD, your volunteer hours with the Montco Office of Children and Youth and Mission Kids, educational seminars in the community, and more, I'm just not sure when you sleep, but I'm hopeful that you'll be able to take full advantage of this well-earned retirement. And on behalf of the Senate of Pennsylvania and as a Lower Gwinnett resident myself, I'd really like to thank you, Dr. Officer Beth Sanborn, I'm sure many other titles in there that I've forgotten, for your 26 years of tireless service. And I have a citation to present you if you'd come up.
We also had a few words from Representative Hambidge, who was not able to join us tonight, but I believe she sent Kevin Carson. Would you want to, do you want to read the citation, or would you like me to read it on behalf of Representative?
Okay.
It's okay, Kevin. I'm not going to read all of the whereas, because it walks you through all of what we know about the rich history and dedication that Officer Beth Sanborn has given. But it does articulate that the House of Representatives of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays a respectful tribute to Officer Beth Sanborn upon her richly deserved retirement, notes with pride and gratitude her record of service, which exceeds those standards normally described as exemplary, offers best wishes for every future success and happiness, and directs a copy of the citation sponsored by Honorable Liz Hambidge on July 27, 2023, and it's transmitted to Officer Beth Sanborn, signed by the Speaker of the House, Joanna McClinton, and attested to by the Chief Clerk of the House, Brooke Wheeler. But before I give you that, Officer Beth Sanborn, I think Senator Collette kind of explained all of the reasons why everyone is in support and very saddened to hear of your retirement, but very joyous that you're going to rest and enjoy our retirement. We are appreciative of all that you've given to Lower Gwinnett, and we also have a proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas Beth Sanborn joined the Lower Gwinnett Police Force in 1997 and then became the first School Resource Officer from 2015 to August 2022. Whereas Beth Sanborn assumed responsibility for all juvenile cases, earning her the rank of Juvenile Detective; and whereas Beth Sanborn earned her Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice and Sociology, her Master's Degree in Criminal Justice, and her Doctorate Degree in Public Administration; and whereas Beth Sanborn actively works with both the Montgomery County Office of Children and Youth and Mission Kids Child Advocacy Center; and whereas Beth Sanborn has been appointed to various committees at the International Center for Law Enforcement Studies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Gwinnett hereby recognize Beth Sanborn for her dedication, commitment, and leadership to Lower Gwinnett Township and our community for the past 26 years." We thank you so very much. Did I give my notebook? My paper?
Good evening. So, I've been the police chief for about 10 years now, and prior to that, I had some issues with discipline and always been involved with good things and bad things with the police department. And anytime I called Beth up to my office, she gets a quick tummy ache. And if I call her up on a Friday and say, "I'd like to see you on Monday," I ruined her whole weekend. And I can honestly tell you that she's never in trouble. Because I don't know what she was hiding or she felt she had to confess to, but there was never anything bad. We're not going to let you get away with it that easily, Beth. We are not going to be able to just sit down and not have anything to say. So, we had Beth's last ride about a month ago. The whole department enjoyed lunch at Arpeggio's afterwards. She got, you know, tons of congratulations there. She has about another week officially with us, two weeks with us, so we're going to try and schedule a couple night shifts in there. But it's truly been an honor to watch you. I was here when you started, and I'll be here when you're leaving. You've been an incredible asset to this police department, incredible. You've been a first of many's that Lower Gwinnett had. You broke a lot of channels for a lot of people. First SRO, first female, first female officer we hired here. So, you've done, you've left an incredible footprint behind, and we are fortunate to have had you, and the county is getting a gem. So, John, whenever you want to upset her tummy, just tell her you want to have a little sit-down with her, and you'll do well. But it honors been, Beth, it's been an honor and a privilege, and please come up, and if you wouldn't mind, give us a couple of your thoughts. So, thank you for your time.
Those are the parts I struggle with. Okay, so this is kind of like a family, so I'm going to start back here, if that's all right. Forgive me for turning my back, but to the board, thank you so much for, oh, sorry. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your support and your trust and your time and your effort, and I do realize that this position was new for our township and for the police department, and therefore there's some nerves that come about when there's going to be a police officer in schools. And as I learned, I'm truly grateful to you for putting me in that position where I could really learn what it was, what the role entailed and the good work that we can do. Thank you, Mike, for the freedom, the flexibility, the trust. That was huge to be able to allow me to mold this position into something that I hope makes Lower Gwinnett proud. The Wissahicken School District, I mean, I have my best friends here, and just the fact that you came should speak volumes. Your kids, I love them. Even the knuckleheads, all of them. But it's true, I spend a lot of money up here and a lot of money here. My heart is in it. So, I'm retiring from here, and I'm excited to take the uniform off. I've gotten rid of everything. There's a small shoebox full of the last 26 years of my life, but what I haven't done is forgone my passion. I've been traveling across the country teaching for the National Association of School Resource Officers because I want to make sure that there are more officers in schools who are treating kids the right way, that they know how to interact with kids, because it means the world to me, and I see the great work that we can do. So, I promote that across the country. During my time that I retired, I've assumed the role of President of PAZARA, the Pennsylvania Association of School Resource Officers. I'm still writing, I'm still researching, I'm still presenting and publishing. I don't sleep. At least when I do, it's fitfully. And then I'm going to assume my new role on Monday, working for John Weed at Montgomery County as the School Safety Coordinator. So, I get to do the best parts of what I get to do, and I'm really excited about that. So, thank you for allowing me that time to grow my skills and those relationships because ultimately it comes down to the relationships that are built to be able to establish that trust. Shannon, thank you for taking Wissahicken. Thank you for making it your own and for taking those kids. I love those kids. Mike Rogie, I see you up there on a little screen and a box. Thank you for being Officer Mike to the kids, to the ones who don't like me or Shannon. Thank you for taking them and for letting us to still work with them. I just, I love it. So, I'm, I'm not going to lie, like, I turned my back and I kept going, and I was like, "Lower Gwinnett, where?" I almost had to plug it into GPS, but I am going to, I'm just teasing, I'm teasing. I'm going to remember this time very fondly, and I hope that I'm someone that you look towards as one of the brighter points here, and just ignore what's happened the last couple months, because I would say those weren't my most shining times, but no, I knew it was time, and I'm ready to leave and start Chapter Two, and I couldn't be happier. I really couldn't. So, thank you for everything. Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kenny, who has some police commendations.
So, for the first time ever, we are going to recognize outstanding police work. You see departments, you know, do this routinely, year after year, we're going to try and do it ourselves. I've always been the one that, that's probably the biggest fault I have, is not recognizing good work in public. So, what I'd like to do, what we did was we started a committee, left me out of it, had a committee that reviewed work that was submitted by other officers for good police work. So, I'm going to have Lieutenant Mike Garten come up. He's going to talk about the separate things that we're going to recognize, and we'll have those officers come forward. We'll try and be brief. I told Jim we'd be out by 11:00.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much to the board for giving us the forum to do this. I think this is really important. Thank you, Chief, for supporting the idea, and I wanted to thank the board, the Commendation Review Board. They came in on their own time. We settled this over Buffalo Wings at Fireside. We got all the paperwork together, and they did it all on their own time. They stuck me with the bill, but other than that, it was totally voluntary on their own time. There's six different classes of awards. Number one would be valid. It would be the biggest award you could get. Thankfully, nobody qualified for that because nobody put their life in that kind of peril over the first six months of this year. However, we do have six different awards, and the first one is a Class VI Award. And the Class VI Award is over-the-top police work. It's exemplary work. It is dedication. It is 18-hour days continually, and I would be remiss if we didn't call up Officer Tim Evard first. I know the board recognized him in June for our accreditation recycle for the third time, but Tim has been our accreditation manager for six months, or, I'm sorry, six years now, and he successfully navigated the police department through the third reaccreditation cycle. The process was three years of record management, countless hours of constantly updating and communicating policy changes as they evolved. Tim has done this for a period of time of more than six years while maintaining all of his duties as a full-time police officer. A lot of agencies have consultants that come in, and that's all they do. Tim maintains his full-time job and does this full-time job on top of it. Tim is a runner, not a very good one, based on the amount of surgeries that he's had, but even when Tim's disabled or recovering from his running mishaps, he still works on accreditation. He's still sending me emails and text messages and updating policy. So, there isn't anybody more dedicated to this than Tim. So, we'd like to give a Class VI Award to Tim Evard for six years of killing it. All right. The next person I would like to call up is Detective Brendan Ryan. We teased Brendan, and we don't call him a detective. We call him the assistant to the detective, because we don't think he's actually earned the title yet. But Brendan really showed what he's made of as far as his detective skills. On April 14th this year, we had a home in Gwinnett Valley that got burglarized. It was over $200,000 worth of jewelry, including a lot of sentimental stuff that was stolen during that house. Detective Ryan was the only detective that was available at the time to do any work. Unfortunately for his case, he was in Gracie training all week. Gracie training, for anybody that doesn't know, is probably the most physically exhausting self-defense tactics training you can have, and he was in that all day, 10 hours a day. As soon as he got done that, he came to Lower Gwinnett and he did detective stuff for an additional eight hours on top of that, and he maintained that for over a week. He coordinated a canvas with patrol, he got DNA, he submitted things against pawn shops, he was looking for IP addresses, he was serving search warrants pretty much everywhere that he could, and more importantly, he ensured that the family that was victimized and hit so hard felt like they were heard and felt like we were doing something. He went well above and beyond what we expected him to do. There wasn't a night that I left, and I usually work later, that Brendan's light wasn't on, and I know what he put into the Gracie training, and then to do this and continually just keep going, I don't think his wife and kids saw him for, you know, the whole time that he was doing that investigation. So, it was above and beyond, and we really appreciate it, so that's why we wanted to recognize that kind of work. Next one I'd like to call Garrett Vale. Not that the other two weren't great, but Garrett's is a little bit more exciting. On December 6 of 2022, we got called to respond to Hattam's Gulf for a report of armed subjects running out of the gas station with guns. We got information that they fled in a car northbound, and Montgomery PD attempted to pull them over. They ditched their car and they ran out on foot near Norman, the Shavany Falls. And there were over 20 officers that responded, including Garrett. Garrett was out in the pouring rain for two hours trying to find these subjects and never gave up. He remained steadfast in his pursuit of these armed criminals as they continued to elude apprehension. He, along with additional officers, spotted one of the suspects across the road. He showed extreme discipline while holding the suspect at rifle point and giving clear verbal commands to which he complied, and a safe arrest was made and nobody got injured. Because of this arrest, the multi-jurisdictional task force was able to advance a portion of their investigation into a criminal enterprise involving catalytic converter thefts that made national news. Officer Vale's actions on this date provided a glowing example of determination, professionalism, and work ethic to the entire department. Nice job, Garrett. Like to call up Officer John Dobson. I'm not going to bore you with the same preamble, because it was the same job. But there were four suspects. Garrett caught the first one. John caught the second one. He did the same thing, except John Dobson spotted one of the actors hiding behind a shed. He exited his vehicle, he used his radio to notify the other members of the search team of his location. He pursued the subject on foot and personally took her into custody without any incident. And the same thing, this made national news. We hit a major catalytic converter theft ring, and John Dobson, along with Garrett, did great. Matter of fact, out of the four suspects, Lower Gwinnett caught three of them. With 20 other departments there, kind of made me a little proud. All right. The next two awards that we're going to, the last two awards that we're going to give out are for unit awards, and this is an entire squad that does something exemplary in and of themselves. And for me, this is probably the most important one, because it shows teamwork, it shows them to be able to work together to accomplish a pretty decent outcome. And Officer Dobson, and Sergeant Idell, who could not be with us tonight, I think he's doing a college tour with his daughter, was on patrol on June 1, 2023. Sergeant Idell and Officer Dobson responded to an attempted burglary report in Gwinnett Valley. The subject attempting to break in was reported to be armed with a knife. While en route to the call, Sergeant Idell contacted surrounding departments for assistance. He also directed Ambulance PD to respond to the Gwinnett Valley train station due to the proximity of the, at the train station, whenever we burgled Gwinnett Valley, we found that a lot of actors will park their cars at a train station or a public place and then escape on foot to get in the car and take off. Dobson and Idell managed to coordinate people there, just in case that was an escape route. They did all these things while en route to a burglary where a person had a knife. They called for detectives, and they called for surrounding departments to come and make sure everything was safe. The subject was caught breaking into the house by Officer Dobson and Sergeant Idell. He had a criminal record of similar-type burglaries. The detectives that came in got a confession out of him, but because the resident was there at the time of the burglary, it heightened the response. It made things a lot more dangerous. Not only did they have to get there quick to make sure the resident was safe, they had 20 other things that they had to do, and they hit all 20 of them. This was a textbook response to an armed burglary, and Dobson and Idell, for their unit, that was the whole unit that day, did an amazing work, and it was a really great result. Nice job. And the last one, last but not least, Sergeant Jerry Hunt, Officer Beth Sanborn, who apparently has to go out on a high note, and Officer Dennis Cosgrove. This was probably the most dangerous of all the awards that we talked about today, and they did something pretty spectacular. On May 20th, the 3/43, Sergeant Hunt was on routine patrol in his Mark Patrol car, and he came across a state trooper investigating a black Hyundai at Bethlem Pike and Welsh Road. Hunt decided to provide assistance to the trooper. He ran the subject through NCI scene clean and discovered that the subject had outstanding warrants, including a forcible rape charge among others. The subject fled on foot when Hunt discovered this, near Welsh Road by the jug handle. Jerry Hunt did an amazing job in maintaining and adjusting a perimeter, as this guy was, later we find out, was armed and was continually trying to evade them. It's very difficult to set a perimeter up, but then, as you get new information, to move that perimeter to keep him boxed in, to keep him out of homes, Officer Sanborn and Officer Cosgrove also responded to whatever he asked them to do, and they shifted their perimeter as well. The subject was never able to break into a house. He was never able to get away, and as they closed in on him, unfortunately, the subject removed the gun from his backpack and ended up taking his own life. But for an hour and a half, they kept this person on the move, and they kept everybody in the town safe. This was a really hazardous event, and it was unfortunate that the subject took his own life, but you kept 10,000 people safe while you were doing it. It was an excellent, excellent job for your whole team. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. So, with that, we're going to move on to the public comments. This portion is open to comments on agenda items, will be taken later. This is for any questions for items not on the agenda. Do we have any comments? Anyone online? Anyone? If you could just come up and, we have the podium a little moved, but if you could just state your name and address.
My name is Rob Middleburg, and I'm at Two Richards Way, essentially across the street. And I was in attendance at the last month's meeting, discussion about the cell phone towers. And I was just wondering if, in the interim, if there was any action, any progress. I know my neighbors especially, that area is really dead, trust me, intend on coming here periodically to see if there's any movement or anything. So, I was just wondering if anything has happened in the last month, or we just status quo.
No, there has been a lot that's been going on. We have had discussions with, the entity that came that night was Rise Up Communications, about potentially alternative spots other than the Township Building to ensure the same level of coverage, but perhaps not to kind of obstruct or be in the view of residents. We're trying to eliminate as many people as we can be affected from having to have it as close to their home as possible. So, we're trying to explore other options, not for the one in Penland Community Park, but the one that would be at the municipal building. We're trying to explore those, and it's just been conversations that the Township staff have had primarily with Rise Up Communications. They've also engaged with our solicitor. I don't know if you want to discuss any of which?
Yes, we've currently entered into lease negotiations, so it's a rather tedious process negotiating a lease, but we've started. I've gotten through the entire lease agreement and have comments back to their attorney, so that's moving forward. So that's moving forward.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. On behalf of all my neighbors, thank you. Really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming out. Any additional comments from anyone? Okay, next up, we have a review of our 2023 capital projects. Turn it over to our staff, our township manager.
Thank you. So this is kind of the first steps working towards our 2024 budget. And we will be going over, the staff will be putting together a new 2024 capital project plan and reviewing it with you in detail. But I wanted to take this chance to give you the big picture, where we're at for all of these projects, give you a chance to ask questions, and also start planting seeds to think about where we should be for going forward in 2024. I'm not going to walk through each project. You have the list in front of you. I thought I'd just take it sort of category by category and see what questions you have and whatever couple highlights I want to point out, but please feel free to ask whatever questions you have. So the first category is buildings. Obviously, the big project there is plans for the new Public Works Project. We have the R F P out to start a needs assessment and feasibility study, so that's finally getting underway. Do you have any particular questions about our building projects? Hearing none. Roads and traffic, transportation projects. The big one here is our Spring House intersection. Normally, we do this in staff updates, but it maybe makes sense, more sense to give you a little bit of an update now.
So Pico is going to be out on Monday, the 28th, to start pole relocation and moving the wires. That should take approximately six weeks to complete. There's a lot of coordination that goes on amongst the various utility companies. And then underground basin work will begin on August 28th as well. So we're going to start seeing some activity out there, some construction going on, which I'm sure you guys are glad to see, and I'm glad to see.
Is there any information that you can give us as to, I know that this was a Pico issue. We needed Pico to give the, to move the poles and for us to move forward, but our understanding was it was going to start by June, or we're going to have a good portion of it done. Is there any, like, explanation as to what took so long, or potentially what was the delay?
Pico has not given us any explanation. They're blaming the storm work, I guess, but I've heard rumors that they're blaming the storm work. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Is the delay, I mean, since it's about a two-month delay in terms of starting, do we think that all, the completion will just be delayed two months, or because of the seasonal change, like, does it impact things more longer term?
It also depends upon the winter we're going to have in 2024. As of our last status meeting, it was still on project completion of April 2024.
Okay.
So we have another status meeting this Thursday, which will be provided for some more information, and we'll definitely pass that along to the board and staff.
I have a question that's not on the list about McKean Road. So the speed, the radar devices, I guess, are up and they're active. I noticed that today. Who owns and maintains those? Is that Beacon, or is that us? How does it work?
Township, yeah, Lower Gwinnett Township owns it, owns them.
Okay. It's not capturing every car that goes by. I don't know if it's supposed to, but, and I also don't know if it's because the signs that are in close proximity to the radar, but I noticed it today that the first car will go through, it'll hit it, and then if there's cars right behind it, it won't catch them. It just won't monitor their, so I don't know if that's normal. I just wanted to call it to someone's attention.
Okay, we'll go out and take a look at that. I've seen that occasionally, but we can definitely go out and take a look at that.
Thank you.
So just one thing, because I'm going to make this point just because it's something that affects all the grants that we have. There's timeframes for work that we have to get done. So, and we have had extensions for the multimodal grant. This intersection project obviously was very complicated, took a long time for design and permitting, and it does expire, I think it's November of this year. So I'm sure we're going to get the grant extension, but for any of our grants, it's important to keep in mind when we're applying for them, when we think we're going to be able to start, because kind of run out of extension requests. Any questions about the transportation projects on the list, or any others?
I only had a question about the new project that was presented as Dager Road and Bethland Pike mast arm.
Yeah, so last year, when Armor, who is our, does, inspects traffic signals for us, when they inspected that traffic signal, they identified some rust and issues like that, so McMahon had called attention to that we should get that on our list to be done next year, and for that work to be done next year, we should start working on specs now, because permitting process will take a while.
Okay, so it's just the actual arm? It's not anything else?
It's no, no change to the intersection, to the traffic signal. It's just the machinery, the equipment there needs to be, the infrastructure needs to be replaced.
Jamie, could you make the table bigger, please? I can't read it from this angle. Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
Stormwater. You'll be hearing more about this soon in greater detail when the Stormwater Management Strategic Plan is done soon later in the fall. Jim Hirsch from Gilmore will be going over that. So that will certainly, there'll be more projects, I think, on our five-year capital plan from that going forward. But we're also, the Houston Creek Flood Study is done, and that's also, as part of the 2024 budget, we'll be discussing projects from that to implement the recommendations from that plan.
So just, just along that line, the Houston Creek Study, like, the implementation, I know that there's one where we're still looking for estimates, but all of these other costs are accurate?
They're from the last draft of the study.
Yeah.
Or from the capital plan. I think the basin project may have been what we had in this year's budget. They're either from the 2023 budget or from the last draft of the study.
Okay.
Whichever was available.
Yeah, I, the costs under the Houston Creek Flood Study are from last year's budget. Those.
Because it looks different than the.
Yeah, so the, the study wasn't complete at that point. So what we'll do for this year's budget is we'll replace those numbers with updated numbers based on the flood study, because that's more, more current than last year's budget.
Okay. So will you also identify if there are grant funding opportunities available for any of that?
Sure, yes.
And then, I'm sorry, I was just going to say ARPA is right next to all of them. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm reading the funding source accurately, it's a capital project. It has the potential for ARPA dollars as well as the Stormwater Fund 31. Is that, that's a grant opportunity, correct? Yeah, it's our ARPA dollars that we need to expend by '26. And then we have to identify, is it '24 or '25?
We have to not only identify, but obligate.
Yeah.
The funding to contract, not just budget, but contract for all of the funding that we intend to use by the end of 2024, and then spend it by the end of 2026.
Yeah, okay. So as far as prioritizing within this capital projects list, it, some of them have ARPA, some of them do not. Is there a triage as far as identifying for second, third, high priority, low? The priority for completion, it was related on the 2023 identification, I'm assuming. So within that, will it be able to be presented to us saying this is a reasonable estimation of how you could expend those ARPA dollars and obligate them?
We have that as a next-gen item, so we can go through all of that. Yeah, I mean, it's, so there, some of this, again, is from the 2023.
I wanted to know, why is it not identified in the spreadsheet?
Next slide.
Wait, hold on, I do have a question.
So just let me answer that question, and.
Like, I just wanted to see it here.
So we, the Stormwater projects definitely can be used, and so they are identified, and there's, there's a few places where we've, I've added ARPA in here for tonight's discussion. And because some of this is going to be determined next year, even the list that I included in the packet as ideas, it's certainly not going to be a final list, because some of it's going to see which projects move forward, which projects don't, what are the cost estimates so that it also works out with the money that we have available. The total that I gave you is the total grant we received, not the total interest we've earned, we got to use that up too. So like, it's, but it's to get the board thinking about how we can use these funds, but they need to be obligated by the end of next year. So projects that we know aren't going to be under construction before that.
That was the reason why I was bringing up Stormwater, specifically as it relates to the timeframes for the grant opportunities for those different projected projects could offset or.
Correct, absolutely.
Indicate that then we wouldn't need that, and that's.
Yeah, because they just wouldn't get done in time, yep. Or, or, I mean, the grant funds maybe would make the ARPA funding not.
Applicable.
Applicable, right. And we'd switch that to another project. What's more likely is if we're applying for grants, that's going to delay the start of the project, and we're not going to be ready to contract for big enough dollars to spend the ARPA money, to obligate the ARPA money in time. The timing for that, the obligation is probably going to be.
That's really what I was hoping to be able to identify, like, if it's not this, then it's this, and we have knowledge to know which one. Okay. Thank you.
Mimi, is the ARPA, is the ARPA money deposited in our account, in our bank account right now? We don't have to apply for somewhere? Okay, very good.
I have a question about the Creek Flood Study. So for 4C, where we talk about partnering with the school district, is it, have those discussions with the school district, at least in a preliminary stage, happened, or is that sort of our, our long-term goal, but we're not? I'm just wondering how far along a partnership has been discussed? If they've been receptive?
I don't, I don't want to say it wasn't discussed at all, but we presented the study to administration and sort of tried to plant the seed that this was forthcoming, but nothing further than that has happened.
Would we need to have those conversations with them before we, you know?
I think the time to have those conversations would be if we identified a grant that we wanted to go after, and at that point, we would be talking to them about support of that grant and potentially the use of their land as a match for a grant or something like that.
Okay, okay.
But if we did, if we decide, so I guess that's kind of where my thought is, or if we decided to use ARPA money for any of those improvements, we would be needing to have that conversation immediately. And I'm assuming that they haven't received a copy of the completed study, correct?
We didn't give them a copy of, I didn't send them a copy of the completed.
It is available on our website, though.
Yes.
Okay.
If you were going to use ARPA funding for the specific basin project that is on the school district's property, then you would need to engage them in the near term. If you're going to use ARPA funding for any of those other improvements that are not on the school district property, then it's less of, less of a concern.
It sounds like a good grant partnership, too, opportunity, like with the school and that it would be maybe an attractive grant application.
Yeah, I.
Partnership with the school.
Personally think that the implementation of that basin on the corner of Houston and Knight is a grant project, not necessarily an ARPA funds project.
But we, we can use some ARPA funds for things that have nothing to do with the school district, and then seek grants with the school district. We don't have to do it all together. We just have to get it done, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
This is something I meant to mention when we were talking about roads and transportation, too, an idea that Fred had, not an idea, but a point that Fred has been emphasizing is that we're going to need to be spending more money to truly maintain our roads. And for a number of years, we have just been doing the kind of standard milling and paving, and there's some roads that just are going to require over time more, a little bit more of a true rebuild or widening, drainage improvements, adding curbs, and kind of identifying that. In the past, I think the practice has pretty much to set the projects to the available money that we get from the gas tax, the liquid fuels grant that we get every year from PennDOT. And we have a balance that we've built up from that, but even with that, over time, I think we're going to probably need, we need to at least be discussing supplementing the liquid fuels funds with some other reserves, or in the short run, ARPA funding, maybe. There's many options. We could spend ARPA many times over if we wanted to. The question is, can, what can we get obligated by the end of 2024? Without having it all spent in one year is the other trick. So we don't want to spend more than $750,000 in one year, because that would trigger a very expensive and painful federal audit, federally required audit. So, which is.
The actual expenditure of money. We just have to have it contracted for by the end of 2024. So if we summon 2024, summon 2025, we avoid the $750,000 audit.
Correct.
Gotcha. And it all has to be done before 2026.
Correct.
Fred, are you working on, or are we in discussions about you coming up with a plan or proposal about, you know, what projects we should really be planning?
Yeah, we have, we have a pretty good list, and we've been updating, and the milling and paving is pretty much set. So we've been, it's kind of started actually with the Stormwater Projects discussion of controlling some Stormwater, but then adding to our list of roads that are due for paving is looking at rebuilding, adding the curbs, Stormwater inlets, and controlling the water along with rebuilding the roads, you know, in conjunction with that. So, yes, we have a good base to start with, but we just need to add a few things to the reconstruction, which is bigger projects than just our standard paving for the year.
Okay, great.
And when we do get into the 2024 budget, one of the things that Melinda and I will have for you in conjunction with, and a lot of people, everybody here will be working on the updated capital project plan, and we want to give you, what Melinda and I want to do is give you a little bit more context of what we have available in reserves from the different capital funds, and what's already spoken for is matches for grants, what could be used, you know, what would be left, so that you won't feel like you're making decisions in a vacuum. Anything else for Stormwater? Parks. So the big news is right now, work is being, well, not literally right now, but this week, work is being done to reskin the fields at Ingersoll. We can use ARPA money for that, so we can get some money spent in 2023. And at the next meeting, hopefully, you'll be able to award a bid to do the parking lot at Penn Ambler Park. And then at the next meeting, you will also get presentation of the park master plans. And as, yeah, and we are having the open house for the Penland Park on September 6th. So again, we'll have lots of projects to fill out. We're going to, even longer capital project plan for 2024. Any questions for the parks? Trails. The trail crossing at Dager Road for the Penland Pike Trail should be done soon, the next month or two. And work is underway for the Phase Two of the Bethland Pike sidewalk widening.
The one, the one thing I would raise with the trails is something that we've discussed before, which is the number of, I'll say, concerns that I've received about dead trees on the trails or trees that are dead and are going to come down. So I'm sure that's not an insignificant expense, and it's, the last thing we want is for a tree to come down with somebody walking under it. So I think it's something that we should think about prioritizing, because we get a lot of use out of the trails in the township from residents and folks outside the township.
Just curious, are people reporting them?
They're reporting them to me, so I don't know if, I don't know if they're reporting them to the portal. them to the portal, but
So we do have a citizens' response portal where you can, everybody can report where something is located, take a picture, upload it to Public Works knows right away.
I've mentioned that.
Okay.
They seem to like your personal
I'm sure they will continue to want to
I'm sure.
Or for, or if it's easier for people to call, to email, but if they can just get the information to Public Works, even in somewhat general, you know, not just like somewhere in Lower Gwinnett, but a little bit on this trail, you know, it was past the whatever, it looked, something like that. So at least narrows down, there's 26 miles of trail, so we can't be walking them
That's the benefit of the citizens' response
There's markers on the trails, like with numbers in the full system.
Right, that would be great.
But see, even the citizens' response portal has GIS.
That's
So it actually pinpoints your location and you just need to take a picture
Take a picture right there.
And upload it and there, there you go. Fred and his crew would just get right there.
I mean, honestly, what I've heard is a lot of stuff on Penland, like between Meadow Creek, Meadow Creek and Breitsley. That's what I've heard in the last two weeks.
So we can have, we can check out that portion of that trail.
And Fred, are those, is that work to take care of dead trees contracted or is that our Public Works Department?
Both. If we can handle it ourselves, we do it. If it's an emergency, we take care of it right away. Like if something immediately, in immediate danger of falling, bigger trees, we just can't, we don't have a crane, we don't have some of the equipment to do larger trees. So we try to make it safe. If we can't, we close the trail so you can't walk on it till we can get it to be safe. So try to take care of as much as we can in-house, but some things are just too big.
So I know that, at least in my own property, I know that once a tree is starting to decline, it's much less work and expense to take it down early versus when it's completely dead. Is there any, anyone looking at the trees along our property lines and trails and so forth to evaluate that?
Unfortunately, on the trees, because there's so many, we're much more reactive to complaints. We do, our crews are out there and if they notice something when they're out, they take note of it, but we don't have any particular like plan of going up and down the properties. There's just so many trees, especially the ash trees, that are dead now that it, it takes all our time just to cut down and make safe the complaints so we don't, unfortunately we're not proactive that way.
Yeah, understood.
Any other trail questions? Planning studies, the comp plan is obviously the big one here that's underway. There is an open house scheduled for October 26th. And sewer capital projects, there is some I and I work that's underway. We are still waiting for the small, to hear about the small water and sewer grant for the two pump stations as well as the water and sewer infrastructure that was planned for Ingersoll Park. So that's just over the projects, you have to remember all of that so we don't have to do that again when we get to the 2024 budget.
Got it.
Good times.
Any other questions about capital projects? Maybe if I can, I just have one question for all of you really that covers the ARPA funding then, since we've just done that. I included a list of projects in the packet and we have some proposed uses for 2023. The Veterans Park and the Township Building digital sign is something we need to go into a little bit more detail with. Everything else was budgeted. If you would, I just wanted to see if you had questions or if you're okay if we plan on using ARPA money for all of the 2023 projects other than the signs and we'll come back to you with more information about the signs.
I think my hesitation is the Veterans Park digital sign.
Pardon me?
The Veterans Park digital sign with the three-way building. I don't know if we ever made any solidifying
That's why I like hold off on that, so we'll come back, I'll come back to you with more information.
No, I know you said it's a separate conversation, but that's really the only one that ever stood out to me as a concern.
We need to do something about that sign, but I want you to know what you're agreeing to.
I think I would like us to be able to address more stormwater, but I don't, I don't know how and when without
So the idea was that we could figure out how to spend some money this year so that we don't get into a pileup where we can't help but spend $750,000 in one year. So we were looking for some things. We have other reserves so that there's no, there aren't any other stormwater projects that we could do in this calendar year that would count for that. We can't, I mean, there's still three years left. I mean, if you'd rather that we sit and wait, it's just a little bit more of a risk and you're going to cause your finance director heart palpitations.
The only thing that I would have liked to see, but it's, we're waiting on the grants. We, until we find the answers to the grant is, is really the concession stand and bathrooms for Ingersoll Park. But I know that until we get an answer regarding sewer and water being brought to that park, we can't really be for certain if we need to consider that for ARPA or not.
But that's not going to happen in 2023 at this point.
No, I understand.
So maybe Janine can help answer this. The, our property, Ingersoll House, is the, is the situation there, we're still waiting for the historic committee to decide what to do. But the reason I'm asking is do we need some money to stabilize that building?
I think that, well, the historic committee has not made a recommendation one way or the other yet, but I know that that's, believe that's on their agenda for the next meeting. And then I believe staff is looking at some other pieces of the Ingersoll House puzzle, which hopefully will be in a better position to kind of talk about collectively when we have all the information. So I don't know if it's a 2023, I'm certain there's not a 2023 expense that we would be able to identify right now. So if we're trying to keep it so that for 2024, we're under that $750, we need these 2023 expenses. Is there something that we could replace the signs with? $70,000?
No, I mean, I still want to spend that, well, I think that's a little bit of a stretch of whether we're going to pull that off in 2023 anyway.
Is document shredding possible this year?
I'm wondering too, what about
Or scanning, not shredding, scanning.
Yes, probably some of that.
Or not really.
We can, we could get some done this year, yes. Is there something you'd rather take off of that list or are you trying to add on to the list?
I was thinking if we took the signs off
If we take the signs
Completely, okay. And then get some document scanning done, if we can.
I'd love for it to look more ARPA-y, but, you know.
Is the document scanning just historical documents or legacy documents? We have to
No, it's all our documents. So that, and so the challenge here is we want to get everything instead of be saving it in paper that we're saving it digitally, as much for continuity of government as well as just ease of access, searching it, not needing, you know, file folders and all kinds of things. So the, we can get some of it done, what we're in the process of doing is setting up our electronic file folders, for lack of a better term, so we know where we're putting it into. And that's just taking a little bit of time as we think through that. But what we can do is get the documents scanned and just make sure they're scanned in an organized enough way that we can then, even if it's next year when we're filing it, so to speak, electronically, the money was spent to scan it this year. So I'm sure we can do that for some of them, we won't get it all done, but
Yeah, is the 31950, is that 100% of the work that needs to be done or that's just for one year?
That was just me getting to using up the money. But actually, again, we wouldn't want to spend more than $750, but it was just arbitrary there.
Okay.
We have a lot of scanning to do, we could spend a lot of money on scanning. So, you know, some of it's, and it's just too much for, if the staff did it all, it would take us years and years and years to do because it'd just be happening an hour here and an hour there. So what we're also doing as we're setting up the electronic file folders is that's going to be the protocol now as we save things, we're saving electronically to stop the bleeding, we're not adding to the pile of documents that have to be scanned. But we have, there's a lot of sewer files and public works files that have already been set aside that are just older files that we know we want to get scanned, so at a minimum we can get them done. There's other files like that that we can get, that would probably be, starting out would be some of the older ones.
Do we think it's possible if, because I know at our next meeting, no more will have sort of cost estimates with, you know, the parks strategic plans, there may be some like low hanging fruit there that we could easily, you know, changes we could easily implement or improvements we could easily do. I don't know if we'd be able to do it in 2023, but I wonder if we, what, Melinda would drive us too crazy if we held off till that September meeting to figure out. I don't want, I don't want to give you too many heart palpitations.
So what I'm going to say, can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. If we keep thinking about what we're going to do and we keep pushing it forward, we're going to be in a bad situation with regards to having more than $750 to spend. And I've seen some other townships kind of in that situation. So I think that we should probably pick some items this year, agree to it and try to get those done so that at least that's off the table and then we do have 2024 and 2025 to spread it out a little bit more. I'm just afraid that it's, we're going to be put in a situation and I, and I don't want to be like, I want to use what we need to use each year so that we're good to go.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I can say, and I suspect we could do this in 2023 to the extent we want to. Janine and I talked about this with the Little League, they need new fencing. That strikes, I mean, it's not necessarily on any of our, I mean, it's part of, I think the
I think it'll be a part of the plan.
Part of the plan, the park plan, but I mean, I don't, that's something that I suspect could probably be done in 2023. I mean, I suspect, I mean.
I think that's what my concern is around all of this, is if there are things that we could potentially do in 2023 or even know that we could absolutely do in 2024, I don't want to commit to things that sound, you know,
For that
That have less impact, I think, than
I think they got a couple estimates too, right Jim, that they shared and then you guys were going to put together some estimates, but I don't, I don't remember when they proposed being able to install them, but I would think they could do it in the fall.
I think the problem with that is if we don't have the fully baked vision of what the park is going to look like and we put up the fencing only to realize that, oh, this is where we wind up needing to put the bathroom.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to take down the fence.
And the concession stand if that grant comes through later and then we don't
I don't think we would, well, Jim can
I think it's a really good discussion for September 12th when we talk about the plans, but I agree with Janine. Like the fences, they're going to be essentially replaced in kind, supplemented in some areas to sort of, the vision is to be able to protect the spectators from foul balls, to be able to protect the cars from foul balls. But like, as far as the long-term vision of the park itself, like the fields are just going to stay where the fields are and the fencing, I mean, there's a thought that the majors field fence could be extended by like 15 feet so they could get the full 200 feet that's sort of prescribed for Little League. But other than that, like those fences are kind of set and they did provide me with estimates.
I mean, if that's the case, that seems like that might be pretty easy to do before year end.
Yeah, we just, we have to look into whether or not there are companies on Co-Stars that can provide those services because if there aren't companies on Co-Stars that can do that, then we have to go through the bidding process and that takes time.
Understood.
I'm sure that this is weather related too, you can't put them in the ground after it freezes, I'm assuming.
Will even get ground frozen anymore here?
Well, we don't know yet.
You can do concrete work in pretty cold temperatures, but
Okay, I thought there were limitations.
It's, less limitations than paving.
Okay.
I don't remember what the cost estimates were, but I do think we could, even if we agreed that we spend what they're proposing here, it's not like it would take up the rest of our ARPA money.
I don't, no, I don't think so, but it's something to talk about adding to these projects.
Right.
So I think the response is no, there's nothing that we are adverse to, however, there might be things that we would like to additionally add and then I guess it's really around strategically trying to fit them in and what to take away so that we don't go over that $750. That just took us 20 minutes.
Yeah, one more thing that we discussed for the ARPA money that's not on the list. We have a bunch of road markings that we want to put the thermoplastic down around the school that we talked about. We're about to get that done. Dagger Road Crossing, we have to
I saw some of those were updated, yeah.
Yeah, we painted crosswalks, but the major one like at Knight and Houston, we want to put the piano key type crosswalk in with thermoplastic. Worcester Road, we moved the stop sign, but we still owe road markings there for the approved county plan. We had planned on doing it ourselves, renting a machine and doing it. Now it's gotten to be so big in so many different places, we got a price and it's going to be close to or over like $10,000. That would probably be a good use of the ARPA money for that because it was kind of unbudgeted and, I mean, it's certainly an improvement to all those places.
Health and safety, yeah.
Yeah.
So we could get that and we, we're ready to go with that, like we'll have that done in the next couple of weeks.
That'd be great.
That's awesome.
Yes.
I just had a quick question and it's really related to Well 14, just because it's on here. I know that we did provide the matching monies to Amberboro, but has Well 14 been updated yet? Has not been updated yet?
No, they, they are caught in regulatory challenges, so no work has happened and, which has added funding challenges, I believe, too, so.
But the money is technically transferred and it's, okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't holding on to, okay. I don't have any additional questions, are there any additional questions from the board? Thank you so much. Onto the next topic of historical markers. The historic committee met last week and had a discussion about historical markers and their first application. Included was a memo from staff related to that first application and the historic committee's recommendation. Their recommendation was to approve the historical marker at 225 Penland Blue Bell Pike commemorating the founding and the history of the Bethland Baptist Church with the marker's final text and location to be approved following completion of those reviews. Included in that memo outlined the timeframes around when the historic committee met, when it was voted, and the current occupants of that original location at 225 Penland Blue Bell Pike China Grace Christian Church submitting a letter authorizing the installation of the marker and that they would like the ability to identify the specific location. Are there any questions from the board?
So Fred, the Public Works is going to be in charge of purchasing the markers, is that correct?
Yes, we'll pick them up and we can do the installation as long as it's approved.
Yeah, is it, is it expensive enough to use some of the ARPA money or is it sort of a trivial expense?
Depends on what kind you're using. I don't know if it's allowable by, for ARPA.
That, that's, okay. If it's already in the works, I thought that would be something to do this year.
So the recommend, are there any additional questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? If you could just come up and say your name and address. from the public? If you could just come up and say your name and address.
Captain E. Bruno and I, this is going back to, I just, next day, our last one. Is it possible to put on the sign out front, and I know some of the county words, you can put up something like, or down tree, or something along those lines, and they stop, kind of, I don't know. Hey, there's a down tree, I see, or, or a pothole at, I don't know if it would fit on that sign, but maybe it would then stop. On you guys, but putting it all in one central bank so that it's controlled by one.
Usually the only way people talk to me, but okay.
No, I don't know if they, I don't know what the
Pretty much.
I'm not sure of the character limitation for a sign out front. I'm sure it's probably plausible, but I think that people generally do just like to talk to us regardless. But we do have it in the listserv. We have posted on our website. We did do a blast identifying the citizens, the portal that people could identify it and
I understand you're there because I drive by there a million times.
I don't know. Do we know what the character limitation is?
I could
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's very limited. But I could every, you know, if we have just like a random day where nothing's going on, I could cheat something on there for sure. Yep.
Good idea.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So back to the historical markers. Are there any comments from the public around the historical markers? Okay, I can't see online at all. Did it go away? Are they still online?
They're still online. It's been like changed this week.
Oh, okay. Okay. Seeing none, like to make a motion to approve the historical marker identification for 225 Penland Blue Bell Pike commemorating the founding and the history of the Bethlehem Baptist Church. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, around the historic advisory committee's meeting last Thursday is consideration for the committee's expenditures for a joint speaker series with the Wisconsin Valley Historic Society. So we have included a memo from the historic society identifying the action, identifying the background and the need. They're looking to have this speaker series, the proposed location is our township building in the fall. And they're, they would like us to set aside $250 for their use around the historic speaker event, and it would be co-sponsored with the historic valley, historic, Wisconsin Valley Historic Society. And, and they kind of talked through the background just to be clear. I don't think the identification of the location is solidified. However, the setting aside of $250 is their request. Are there any questions from the board?
Do we know who the speaker is?
I don't think that they solidified it. They had a whole litany of individuals that they were identifying, but I don't think that they were firm about one. And that's, my only concern is, are we assured that the 250 would be, is it just an honorarium or is it an actual speaker fee associated?
I think that they were suggesting up to 250 because some of the, some of the speakers, you know, have a set fee of, you know, a hundred dollars or 150, and some actually, you know, ask you to donate it to a place. But they weren't sure whether they'd even have the ability to get the money before they could pursue the actual speakers. Lower Guinnes anniversary this year was the 350 years this year since our founding. So they wanted to try and
Amplify them.
Honor, you know, get, get a lower Guinnes specific historical speaker. They wanted to be able to use the township building, just obviously so they wouldn't have to like rent any space. But before nailing down the details, they wanted to make sure they would be able to set aside that money.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. And I'm sure that they're going to hire a legit speaker, but I'd also like to know and approve who's going to be coming speaking.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I don't think they would have a problem with that. So maybe we could make the approval, you know.
Contingent on, on the identification of the speaker, but I think if they can identify that they do have the money to
And they can go out and, and the historical society knows how much they have to contribute as well because they were going to do it together.
Is this going to be a recurring expense? Are they going to get a whole series?
They would like, I mean, I think they would certainly like to do a speaker series, one of their, you know, talked about missions has been to really educate the public on our history here. So I, I think that they would, but I think they want to try one and those first. And that's why they're sort of leaning on the historical society because they do that a lot.
My question is to Neil, are we able to authorize the expenditure of money with a contingency that they identify the speaker?
Yes, but my question is, is it identification or identification and approval?
That's the concern. So I guess for clarification points, Cash, do you want to have identification and, you want to have identification and approval? Then I don't think we can authorize the money, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Because the money gives them the authorization to move forward, but if we're giving them identification and approval that they need to come back to us for, then.
Well, they can come back for, we can approve the money, but they can come back first.
I mean, can't we just approve a budget for them?
Right, yeah.
It's a $250 budget and
Is that enough?
I don't think so, but that's
You know, they, I think that this is their first, you know, sort of ask for an expenditure of money. The markers was not really, that was really something that the board, I think, championed. So they knew that, you know, that would be approved. This is not something that
Is this an honorarium though? Because I think an honorarium, okay, maybe 250, but I would think if somebody's coming to speak.
This, I mean, I don't think, if, if this is what the historic committee thinks they need, I don't think we should second guess. I mean, that's what they're, I think we can budget 250 per speakers and then, you know, that's in their budget and then we have to approve any speaker. We can, can we do it that way?
And so was it identifying that we will approve a budget of $250 for a speaker series? And then they have to identi, they have to come back and I, we don't even have to say that?
No.
No, you don't.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that the motion
They understand that they'll have to get permission for whoever the speaker is.
Whoever the speaker is. Yeah. And if they, you know, if there's, if the board is amenable to a larger series, you know, where they partner with the society for multiple speaker event, I can share that with them and they can try and put something together. I think they were just trying to
That'd be baby steps.
Baby steps.
I think that's a good idea. Let's see how this goes.
See how it goes.
Are there any questions from the public?
One question for clarification. So they, they'll know now, assuming this approves, this passes, that how much money they have to spend. But once they identify a speaker, you do want them to come back before that speaker's announced or anything else for board approval. Yes?
Yes. We're just identifying a budget for the speaker series.
But they share it with us and then if we object, it has to be at a meeting or?
We would have to then take a vote on that.
How would we know if we object without violating the Sun Chen law? We have to do it at a public meeting.
If we talk about it.
So just to clarify, we're not authorizing the expenditure. We're authorizing the budget for a joint speaker event with the Wisconsin Valley Historic Society. That is sufficient language?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to move forward with the authorization of a budget for a joint speaker event with the Wisconsin Valley Historic Society and the Lower Guinnes Historic Advisory Committee. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so the communication is simply back to the advisory committee as they identify, then they need to go back to the board to, to authorize the expenditure of that budgeted amount. Okay. Next up is a, is a memo that's kind of been common. And it's, it's, it's the alcohol waiver fee for Fall Fest. Staff have provided a memo that was included in the manager's report of the board packet. And, and the motion is to waive the requirements of part six, section 61201 of the Township Code to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol for Lower Guinnes Fall Fest to be held on September 23rd, 2023 from noon to 5:00 PM. Below is the section of the code and it is up on the screen. And it includes the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages prohibited upon and on, and all property owned by the township as well as publicly owned property, including but not limited to property owned by the Commonwealth, the county, the township, and the Wisconsin School District. This is to waive it for this event only during the hours of the Fall Fest. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to waive the requirements of that section. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cheers.
Anyone, anyone opposed?
Fight me on that one.
Is anyone opposed? I didn't hear, did you, did you respond to say, I didn't hear you?
Yeah, I guess I'm in favor. Okay.
Or do you want to recuse? I don't, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I just didn't hear you.
Yeah, I didn't say anything. I'm still thinking about it. I'll say, okay, yay.
Okay. All are in favor? Okay. Thank you so much. Next is Resolution 2023 and this updating our RFP authorization process. We have a memo prepared by staff and it kind of outlines what we did as it relates to updating the RFP in 2022 for professional services. It updates what the request is from staff and they're requesting that the RFP requirement in the resolution be relaxed to avoid creating extra work for staff when it's related to an RFP that's not necessary or appropriate for the professional services in question. And it goes through to explain in more detail what the resolution in 2022 accomplished and how it was not necessary to prepare the RFP setting forth the purpose, scope of work for standard services such as banking and that banks know what services they provide and have materials prepared describing those services. It is essentially an extra step or an extra procedural step that we have required staff to do. They're asking if it can be lax as it relates to those services that are prescribed in the memo. Are there any questions from the board? Anything to lighten your load? Are there any questions from the public online? And I think that the, the resolution is up on the screen, was included in our board package as well as online. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 202320, revising the procedure for solicitation of professional services. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is the approval of an agreement with Guinnes Friends for a multimodal transportation fund agreement, grant, not agreement. I think that we all were aware that we received, I think in the fall, grant monies as it relates to Lower Guinnes Township. And it was through D C E D Multimodal Transportation Fund on behalf of the Guinnes Friends Meeting. We applied on behalf of the Guinnes Friends Meeting and it was to supply a bus shelter and a walkway along with the associated improvements along the Guinnes Friends property at DeKalb and Summietown Pike. The grant was awarded earlier in the year in the amount of 147,882. We sort of acted as the administrator for this project. The role of the township is different in this situation as the Guinnes Friends Meeting House is actually responsible for administering and has the financial obligation. We were the applicant. This grant agreement was attached and included in our board packet and it was included for a review before us. It's just to authorize the township manager, Ms. Gleason, to sign the cooperative agreement for eventual submission to D C E D along with Econ Partners. And included within our board packet was the actual agreement. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Nobody online? No. So we, I would like to make a motion for us to approve the Guinnes Friends Cooperation Agreement allocating the township manager's assigned cooperation agreement on behalf of the board. Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Thank you. Next up is Resolution 2023, which is the adoption of the Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We do have a memo included in our board packet provided by staff. It explains that Montgomery County has completed their regular five-year update of our mitigation, hazard mitigation plan and explained the background information that's been provided on the website. The plan applies to Lower Guinnes and effectively is part of the emergency management planning. Staff reviewed and make, has made recommendations that the board approve the resolution adopting the plan. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan for Lower Guinnes Township. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next up is a review of the Township Engineers Report. Do we have any questions for the Township Engineer? The report, actually, it's out of, it's fine.
I think it came in separate email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was included in an email from our administrative assistant, and I think it came later. But are there any questions related to any of the projects, the work performed or any of the work for last period? From the board? No. Anything that you want to share with us? Mr. Hirsch? Why does he look like that?
We have, we're going to open bids for the Pen Ambler Park paving. So that'll be on your next agenda. The road paving, the milling and paving is complete and, and they're working on the Nova chip now. So that's the last bit of it. Have that finished before school starts. And then, you know, your next agenda item or your next agenda will also have the master plans for the park. So it's a kind of a lot of what we've been working on.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Excellent work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up is the review of the Traffic Engineers Report, which was included in our board packet. Are there any questions for our traffic engineer?
Yeah, sorry. I'm not seeing it right now, but I thought I saw a evaluation of Summietown for widening. Is that in the Traffic Engineers Report?
Springhouse Intersection or?
Well, I thought it was farther down than
The gap, the gap.
Yeah.
Springhouse Innovation Park Gap.
I, I think so.
Right.
Right.
I think it was referred to as Summietown Pike.
I just wondered what, what that was. If that's something that's being evaluated.
I think that's in the, is that in the capital improvement spreadsheet?
It may be.
I think that's the gap of widening between MRA, what MRA was proposing and what the Springhouse Intersection improvements were proposing.
Okay, maybe that's where I saw.
Oh, that's Inspector Property, the little piece. Yeah.
It's between the
That's on Narstown.
Narstown Road between McKean and Correct. And Bethlehem Pike.
I thought I saw something about Summietown too, but yeah.
It was, it was Summietown, but I think it was a, a
Okay.
Narstown.
To, towards William Penn Inn?
Yes, exact word.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably it. I just wondered if, what, what the idea is and if it's, if planning has been started?
Has not started yet. No.
Okay, so it's just an idea on the books right now?
Correct. Looking into the future potential projects and widening along Summietown Pike.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot. But I just had, we had had many discussions and a, and a resident had come in and talked, talked to us about Tipsy Hill Road, just improvements as it related to better signage. And I guess more prominent information as it related to the bridge past Editor's Lane. I wasn't sure if any of that or all of that has been completed. And it might be more Public Works, but I know Chad had discussed it with us previously.
There's additional signage put up. I don't know.
Someone had recently just asked me about this in Giant. So, and I wasn't sure if it had all been completed or the, or if portions of it still needed to be done.
I can't say if all of it's done, but I did notice that some of it, there is new signs and some new roadway markings there near the bridge. So that's started. I don't know the extent of what they're doing. So I don't know if it's finished.
Okay. If it's possible to just get an update or if we could just get an update? Was it anyone that came in to discuss? It wasn't the resident, but I guess other people were aware and just wanted to know.
It did put markings on the ground, like the triangles on each side. They did put markings on the ground, like the triangles on each side. Um.
And I don't drive down that way enough to know.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the extent of what they're doing.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additional questions for our traffic engineer? Any from the public? Oh, nobody's here. Excellent job as well. Next up is a review of our financial year-to-date. And we do have a memo included in our, in our report from our, um, our finance director. That brings a couple of items to our attention. I don't know, Mel, did you have any specific questions you wanted to ask us or just wanted to highlight those areas? Oh, I'm sorry. Nobody online can hear you. I don't think anyone's there though.
From the last meeting, Tessie, you had asked a question about one of the funds. So what I thought I'd do is every once in a while, um, when there's not a lot on the agenda, sorry, I didn't know. But, um, I'd highlight a particular fund. It, um, gives me more of an observation of everything that's happening. So in the back of the packet, I did highlight the Traffic Impact Fund and just kind of explain to you what it does, how we, uh, get monies in, how we spend them and what's happening on that. So I just, that's the only thing, but you guys can read that.
Okay.
Fun of the week. I like it. I like it.
That's very helpful. Thank you for doing that. So is the plan though still to collapse some of the funds or, um, further clarify what, what the definition is?
Well, what I think is, um, once I get through this year and I see how everything sort of pans out with the budget and whatnot, at that point, I think I would be better equipped to make any suggestions about maybe, you know, collapsing the funds or, um, not doing it or just, just getting a better understanding in general of what they're all used for. So I think it's a little too early on for me right now to say that I would like to collapse anything yet. I kind of want to see how it plays out.
Sure. I got it. Thanks. It's a big job.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? So included of the, um, financials year-to-date was our balance sheet for, um, July of 2023. Next up, we have the invoices for July 2023. Did everybody get a chance to review those? Any questions related to the invoices?
Light reading.
Any questions? From anyone in the public? Seeing none. I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices for July 2023. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next up is approval of the minutes for July 25th, 2023 meeting. Um, they were included in our board packet. Are there any questions on those minutes? Comments, addition, feedback? No? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the July 25th, 2023 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was about to make note of that, but thank you. Next up, um, included in our board packet was the supervisor, um, volunteer commission meeting highlights were included in our board packet. Are there any questions regarding the highlights that were compiled or any additional? Or let's just go with, are there any questions first? No? Okay. Very well. We appreciate your time and attention too.
I do think, I do think they're very helpful.
I do, I do like it in this format and I do like the color coding as well.
I was going to also rec, um, comment that those are very helpful and I think, um, it was really nice to see that snippet summary.
Are they included in the board packet online? Okay. I just, I use them as reference too, so I appreciate that. Next is, uh, staff updates on municipal activities and projects. I know that we were having an update on the Deger road trail crossing. That kind of was already discussed a little bit. I don't know who has the microphone.
Um, yeah, the underwork done is complete. The ADA ramps, ADA ramps are installed. Uh, the poles are up, the flashers are up. The Township Fred, correct if I'm wrong, will be done, the trail approach work and the pavement marking by end of August. Okay. At which point we will contact Penn Dot to set up the final inspection. With Labor Day being early, uh, September, we're anticipating that the final inspection will be done mid-September. At which point the, uh, it'll be operating.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Do you want to, I'm trying to figure out what might be also you, the traffic signal at Penland Pike and Twelton Avenue. Do you want to update on, on this and that?
Yeah, unfortunately we didn't get awarded any money in the last round of the Green Light Go, um, grant. So we're switching gears and heading toward, or going to apply the D C E D L S A grant. And we, that window is open from September 1st through November 30th of 23. There's no township match with that, so.
I don't know if this question is for you or it's for staff. Is that going to be the only item that we would, um, use the local shared town grant for? Or is there any other improvements related to, um, traffic signaling or mast arm improvements or?
Not for that intersection now.
Not? Okay. Okay.
No, not even that, right? Yep.
Okay. Is it, I know that there's no like parameters necessarily, but kind of. If it's related generally, ideal, so is there any other traffic improvement or mast arm replacement that we could include in that grant application?
You can take a look at it.
Just that we're trying to get the most bang for our buck as it relates to.
Right. Yep. Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we kind of did do an update on the Springhouse Intersection Construction, but if you want to kind of elaborate on anything else, I think we went over it a little bit.
That's pretty much all I had was what I said earlier, but any other questions, I can definitely field them.
Are there any additional questions from the board about the Springhouse Intersection Construction? Okay.
I guess I do have one, just a quick question. They're done taking trees down, right?
Yeah.
I guess next up is the, the crosswalk painting by the schools. Fred, you did update us about that, but if you wanted to add any additional details?
Yeah, we, um, we added crosswalks along Knights Road, all the intersections, all the way out to Mount Pleasant. We are going to add stop bars and the word stop painted at each of those intersections as well. We are adding signage on Houston Road at all the crosswalks and the approach to the crosswalks. The fluorescent yellow ones, maybe you've seen them at some of our other crosswalks. Just to make it stand out and they'll be new and hopefully that will add to the safety there.
So all walkers that potentially would utilize a road to get to, to get to one of the schools will have all of that on it?
All that. Yeah, there should be a safe way with the sidewalks, crosswalks and the crossing guard. They stay on the sidewalk and use the crosswalks. I think they'll stand out and it should be apparent to traffic where people will be crossing.
Awesome job. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff updates? No? No staff updates? Chief, no staff updates? Okay. We appreciate the update.
Danielle, I would just like to say that, um, I'd like to thank Sandy and the other staff for getting the postcards out, the E A C postcards. So everybody, uh, should have gotten two postcards, one for the tree giveaway and another announcing, uh, a Going Green Award. So if you haven't gotten those, keep an eye out. Mine came today.
Tessie, you can use this time to just roll right into your supervisor comments. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, thank you, group.
Thanks.
Oh, that was amazing at the beginning of this meeting. It's a wonderful effort. And that is what, you know, is Lower Gwinnett proud, right? And, I mean, I knew some of that. I didn't know all of it. And it's just such a great demonstration to our community of all the things that go behind, on behind the scenes to make it the safe and the lovely community that it is. And, I mean, hats off to you and your fellow officers and you're a great leader too. I mean, you.
You're impressive, Ruth, though.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, it looked like it was a few of them, like frat boys. Young and.
I think we all have to get our right arm tatted. Like we gotta get a sleeve. Yeah, I think the sleeve on the right arm.
At the last hiring a year ago, one of the officers was, has complete sleeves. So we changed our tattoo policy. And I'm telling you, what I'm seeing around the whole county, it's changing everywhere. I have to accept it. We're seeing, we're, we're, we're seeing tattoos and the other thing we're seeing everywhere, I don't want to say it too loud. I don't want anybody to hear me. We're seeing beards everywhere now.
I know.
She looks like he's 12.
But I'm very, very happy. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I would like to also, uh, echo Kathleen's sentiment. I, I really appreciated hearing all that. It's not, because there's not such a rich local news source now, it's not often that I hear what our police force has been doing. And I'm very proud, uh, to hear all that and the awards and, and all the hard work. So thank you for that and thanks.
Maybe twice a year? If it warrant, if it's warranted.
You just don't win any of those valor awards.
Right. We can stay away from those, hopefully.
Janine?
Just echo what everybody said. Thanks, chief, and congratulations to all the officers and come out for Fall Fest. Of course you got us the fanatic again.
What did you say? What?
A special surprise.
Sir Torski?
The only thing I'd say is just a special thanks to, um, the Parks and Rec folks and Jim for the strategic plan. I'm really looking forward to seeing it. I got a sneak preview of it. Um, I think you guys just killed it. So I, I, and I would encourage folks to come out at our next meeting and, and, and see what we have planned. It's going to be really special. But thank you.
I just want to echo everything that, um, everyone has said about our police. I really appreciate it, um, hearing, hearing all of the act, not just the, the, this year bravery and, and this dedication of our police force. I think that people assume that the biggest thing that we're dealing with is deer. And it's unfortunate to know that things are happening and I know a lot of people want to put their head in the sand and pretend it isn't, but to know that we have a police force that's prepared, that's executed, that's trained well and are, um, stars and that a unit is only two people, but they get what they need to get done. So I, I'm appreciative to know that and thankful for all of their service. Also want to say a final farewell and thank you to Dr., um, Dr. Officer Beth Sanborn. And just to remind people that there is a lot of activities coming up. We will be having an open house at the McCormick House on Wednesday from four to seven. We will be having, um, a Penland Park Planning Session on September 6th. I believe 6th. And then also that our Fall Fest is September 23rd, um, from noon to 5:00. So I appreciate everyone to get involved and to come out. We, we want you to be engaged as well as our comprehensive plan, um, is still out there. And we're looking for feedback on the comprehensive plan. It's the biggest document that determines how our community will look and how we plan for it to look five, 10, 15 years down the line. So it's important that people that live here now and, and want to live here in the future and want their children to experience what they're experiencing to engage and to complete that survey. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, I did see.
I had to return my library book tomorrow.